To Ms. Berry or to you, is there any impact to the adjoining properties? Is there anything that would be adverse to what's going on outside of your property?
The only impact would be to the adjoining property owned by the family partnership. Other than that, by the time the runoff leaves the site, it's already reduced well below the existing amount of runoff that's there. So there shouldn't be any off-site impact at all.
So the adjoining properties actually could benefit from what you're doing with the runoff?
Right, because we are reducing it below the pre-development level. I mean, for the smaller storms, it's quite a bit below. For the 10-year storm, we're still reducing it below the pre-development level. So they can benefit.
Super, thank you.
Commissioner Mensing, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Administrator Barry?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to do some additional information. Ms. Unkfer did a great job of summarizing the project. I just wanted to kind of go over the zoning requirements.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, you gotta move your mouse so it's really... So keep moving your mouse until you see it on the screen.
Oh.
Click on it.
Okay.
And now I can just...
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask for.
Right, so here's an aerial of the property. It gives you an idea of how, where the connection is gonna be. You can see there is a structure right here on this property. That's the only thing that's really gonna be removed and that area disturbed. That's where the connection is really gonna take place. It kind of goes through here. So it'll be a driveway, and it has to actually be elevated due to the change in topography. And the fire marshal did review the information as well, and he's happy with the width of the drive aisle. More safety precautions. But you can see there, these properties are basically already developed. And what we did is we focused on any changes that they were doing to the property would have to comply with the current requirements. We won't penalize them to bring the entire property up to existing standards. That would be a bit further than some so. That's what, so the parking that you see here actually does meet the, and exceeds the parking requirements for this site. And because there's really limited improvement on this site, we've really just focused zoning requirements on the property that Conner Center would have. And the new proposed warehouse will be in this vicinity. There'll be a freeway in between. So you can kind of see, this is, of course, part of the Connor Center. Here's Owens Drive on the south here. Venture Court's down here. And Euclid towards the schools, the high school and middle school are on the west side. And here's just really a zoning map. It shows the building location. You can see everything is in blue. That's all zoned I-1, which is industrial district. This type of contractors' warehouse and storage is certainly permitted in the I-1 district. You can see by the previous photo that we do have a lot of that type of contractor yards in the Connor Center. So really, every adjacent property is zoned I-1. Across the street, there is the high school and middle school zone PF, so that's showing. But you can see that this is, use is certainly permitted and very compatible to the area. I also believe that probably one of the reasons for the drive-by is better access to Euclid Avenue with quick access, probably to 28 if I'm not mistaken. I mean, there's been some circulation concerns, and I think this will help alleviate that. I know Virginia Contractor Supply seems to do quite a big business and has trucks coming back and forth, so I think this will also have a better circulation for their business, as well as the roads surrounding property. These are just the same plans that Ms. Unkfer showed you. And just with the arrow here is really the drive aisle and the stormwater management component that she discussed is just to the north of that. And I'll just leave up the landscape plan. It is, it meets the requirements. They are adding the zoning requirement of screening and landscaping along the new fencing that they're proposing. You can see that they also are adding a few trees and shrubs, which is required anytime there's grass area or landscape area. So overall, the plan meets all the minimum zoning and engineering requirements. It was reviewed for engineering compliance, and it does meet all the stormwater, as well as any of the PFM requirements for this type of lot. So we are recommending that the planning commission recommend to me zoning, the zoning administrator approval of site plan SP 2008.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Administrator Barry?
No, I'm coming in.
I have a, just for my, right now, is there, I'm trying to put that up there with that. Is there any entrance way into the Owens Court property from that side? Or is the only entrance all the way in from Euclid, all the way through the property? Is there currently an entrance into the, down here?
Yes, it's right here.
Owens, we have two entrances.
Okay. So that wasn't landlocked from Euclid? I mean, you didn't have to just come in there and turn around and go back out, okay?
Yeah, I think it just gets better access for, I mean, if you'd like, you can kind of explain it if you want to, but...
Well, for us, our goal is to use the new lot as our receiving area. And the goal would be to be able to get tractor-trailers off of Owens, because there's a lot of backup on Owens from us and other businesses, to pull them straight through in with all this footage of parking lanes while they wait to get unloaded and load them this way, and then pull out on the other side. This will be mainly an entrance and an exit only, for the most part.
So you come in from Owens and exit onto Euclid?
Correct.
Okay, that makes total sense, yeah.
And mostly would be the deliveries into us, and our customers usually come in here, get loaded, and then circle around this way back.
So right now, it's in and out at the same place?
Yeah, we kind of go in and out, and with the tightness of this yard, you know, a tractor-trailer here, you can imagine basically clogs up everything, and then, you know, there may be one here, and one here, and a couple here, and it would really help to get these trucks off of the main roads.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Mensing, do you have any questions for Administrator Barry?
No questions, but I like the plan. I like the landscaping plan. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you, appreciate it. And are there any members of the public? I don't see any, but just to get a confirmation, no members of the public, so we don't have any public input. Any additional questions at all for the applicant before we close the public hearing? Only meeting, actually. I don't hear any, so at this time, I'd like to close the public meeting. The time is 7:30. Would anyone care to begin discussion or make a motion? And if so, I can read a motion and see if you got a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead and read it off there, and so I'll ask for a motion to recommend site plan SP number 20-08, Virginia Contractor Supply, to ask for a motion to recommend the approval to the zoning administrator for approval of a site plan. Is there a motion?
No, moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries in absolute. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is a discussion. We're moving into an opportunity now to actually look at the comprehensive plan, and I've had the pleasure of speaking with our city manager and conferring with our zoning administrator, and we have an opportunity to assist the city in looking at the goals associated with each chapter of the comprehensive plan, and take our time walking through those goals and coming up with more relevant, less numerous possibly, and more relevant goals for our, the comprehensive plan was last updated over 15 years ago, and the city has grown in population and in its construction as well. So if we can provide assistance to the city in looking at the goals and making sure that they're relevant for today, then I think we will be doing a good thing for the city. Does that, so my thought would be to take one chapter at a time with the goals that are in each chapter. If we have our plans handy, we can just, let's go to the, go to the first chapter where there are some goals here. So we've got the history.
Could I ask a question at this point?
Sure.
Okay, on the cover, it says that this was written February 2006. Has it been updated since then? Are there places that have changes, and are they so noteworthy?
Certain chapters have been updated. The land use chapter was recently amended in, guess what, 2019? What, 2019? Yeah. And the transportation chapter was approved from 2020. So I honestly don't know, I mean, it's written, I believe, in, on the bottom of the page when there was an amendment.
Okay, if there was one, then it would show that. Good, so I'm looking at page 36 of the comprehensive plan. That looks like it's the first page for goals.
Page what? I'm sorry, Lester.
Page 36.
36, okay.
And unless I missed something before, that looks like it would be our first, the economic development and employment section. I don't think, I didn't see any goals for the population and housing, so.
So that would be chapter five.
Yes, so we have, we have three overarching goals, and then it looks like we have multiple strategies under each goal. So thought would be to, for us to, we can start with this chapter, again, unless I missed anything before, with goals, and go through and see which ones, just take a look at all of them, look at anything that, if anything's still relevant, we can pull it forward. If we find there aren't relevant action strategies, or even if the goals should be reworded, this is an opportunity for us to come up with proposals. And then, what I would say is that at our next meeting, we would have an opportunity to discuss our different, what we come up with for goals for it. I would say that three of five goals for each section, is that...
For each chapter?
Each chapter.
Okay.
Say, let's say five, and then that way, we can do a, like a top three and pick a, you know, reserve two or something like that, if that makes sense. Some of the chapters really have quite a few, so, but we can, you know, if we come up with more, we don't have to turn them away. It's just that it seemed, we would like to, I'd like to see, make sure that we, the city has, you know, relevant updated goals, and that they're flexible, but they're workable, they're relevant as well.
I think it'd be helpful for me if I understood the progress on the goals that exist here and the strategies from 2006 to present, to really help me understand the relevancy of what exists and what needs to change.
Okay.
That's a great suggestion.
Fine.
Kind of, it's a good time, I guess, to make a word, like a more of a work session. So what I ask the administrator for next time is to convert this to a Word document.
Fine.
And let's play around with it, right?
Good.
So it's actually updated, because I look at that first action strategy. I'm not sure how relevant that is anymore.
I was just gonna ask if I could go on top of Michael's question, because just to identify what's already talked about in the actions, because I'm sure things have changed drastically in those...
Yeah, absolutely. And some of these things we really haven't dived deep into, is kind of an overarching strategy recommendation of the governing body, and so some of these things probably need to be fleshed out a little bit more as well, but certainly that first goal probably needs to go away as there's already been residential development in between and rezonings that have already occurred, even for the vacant parcels that remain besides. So if you look at the immediate area in front of, you know, the Palisades and that area, I think with the successful downtown development on this side...
Yes.
There will be pressure, market pressure, for the other side of the VRE station to also have some kind of development, right? Have required cooperation with the VRE, and there's a private landowner right now, a few parcels across the track as well. So it would require some kind of comprehensive coordination. I don't think we're there yet.
Sure.
I think, again, that this, we need to be successful here first.
Correct.
But I think that's a good, noble, long-term vision. I think that's where you could have additional commercial.
Okay.
I think further up to Andrew Drive, I just don't see commercial being viable from a market perspective, from a locational perspective. And again, I think there's only one parcel remaining really between that, and that'd be the parcel off of Digital Drive, sandwiched between Digital Drive and Belmont Station.
Yes.
That's the last remaining parcel, and you have that industrial building as well. So it's a kind of a strange partial parcel. I don't think standard commercial is viable there. I think, you know, the warehouses have expressed interest. I'm not sure that's something that we would really want as a city in that part of the area as well. So I think, so I definitely think that that should go away, is the action strategy should be for city staff to, to work with the community, with the planning commission, the governing body, to perhaps develop a vision for the remaining parcels on the other side of the railroad tracks, as we're successful with the Phase 3 and 4 development here on this side of the tracks, and we have the, you know, the anchor and things take off here. Then you're gonna have, especially with the VRE, looking to operate a little bit more like Metro with more reverse commute as well, and more weekend and evening services as well over the next 10 years as Amazon ramps up, gets built up in HQ2.
Yeah.
That's gonna, again, create pressure for additional, kind of more town center, you know, transit-oriented development around there as well. So I definitely think that that should, that action items should be, I think, much should be significantly rephrased, but again, the action strategy should be to kind of develop the analysis. We shouldn't just say, things that are vague like that, it's gonna get us into trouble, right? We just say, oh yeah, you're gonna be able to do a 60/40 development here on this side between commercial and residential. That didn't match the market reality.
Right.
So the approach that we took when I came in here in 2017 is, let's look at the market analytics first. Let's see what the market says can actually be viable here, and then when we have that, let's also work with professional firm to develop some good professional concepts, and we brought those back for review. So I think that's, those are kind of, I think, better action strategy. Let's do the analysis of what is viable, and then actually develop some master plans for what the community's vision could be, that that's market viable. It can't just be vision that's not market viable. The two kind of have to mesh.
Would it be, not to put work, but would it be helpful for Administrator Barry or yourself for accommodation to put forward how you see these goals being more relevant, and then we can discuss those then? Is that, I mean, would that be helpful?
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I said, like, next time, I think we can bring up a Word document, and I can start...
Fine, so we'll go through these ourselves, and then we'll come back at the next meeting. We can actually hear from the city what it sees as being relevant goals. We can then weigh in and, you know, take it from there. Does that sound reasonable, commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mensing, does that sound like a plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to, if you get in-between meetings, look at these.
Sure.
I think in-meetings, I have my attention here.
Good. That's perfect.
I can work.
Great. No, we want, we want to get your, your input as a city. I mean, that's, we don't want to be writing something that has absolutely nothing to do with where the city sees it going to, so.
Lester, when you say you're bringing up as a Word document, you could physically do it while we're sitting here talking about it, and we could all look at it and flesh it out at the same time.
Absolutely.
Makes sense, yes, total sense.
I kind of provide some real-time background information on what's, what's occurring, what's been occurring in the city. We can start fleshing out, and we have time.
Yes.
If we make a change that night, we can come back, we can think about it, and then come back to the next meeting and say, okay, well, you know, I've thought about that proposed edit, and maybe we should do it this way.
Because I would want to give it time, as we go through each chapter, give it some reflection time to see, so that by the time we get to a point, we've got a good, solid agreement all around that these are the new goals that we want to move forward on. So there is plenty of time, and so we can just keep, we'll revisit the goals once we do settle on them initially, to give everyone a chance to, so that's good, okay?
And the way I, maybe I'm way out here in left field, but for me to sit and read this, and I think, well, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but how would I change it? My process is to hear the discussion, and as the discussion goes, my thoughts change, and I readjust the whole time this is going on. Maybe that's not a good way to do it, but that's the way it works for me, so.
I think it's a good, effective work session, because again, you're not bound to make a decision right there.
Yeah, for me to do it on my own, it's going, gee whiz, that's, you know...
Again, it's kind of a brainstorming citizenry.
Yeah, yeah.
You all are representing our residents, and so you're providing input, we're kind of, I'm providing kind of the city government perspective, what we've been doing, and we can just throw around different ideas, take different, you know, attempts to kind of modify, right? Making sure it's best practices as well, and start modifying it piece by piece. And of course, probably a lot of the background needs to be updated. We may have to contract out some support to go in there and start...
But that can be identified as we go through forward, right? Okay.
Yeah, so parcels north of Manassas Drive, on Euclid and Drive should be rezoned to allow commercial and office uses. I'm guessing they're referring to kind of like B2 there versus...
See, there's nothing left up there.
Yeah, it's all kind of developed.
Yeah, it's all changed, and it's like, used to be, and you, this is way before your old's time, but there were two little, Lena's probably the only person here that knows who I'm talking about. There were two little white houses on the corner of what is now Andrew and Manassas Drive, and that's how you gave directions to people. Come to Manassas, and you see those two little white houses. Well, you can't do that anymore. Those white houses are long gone. Yeah.
So again, I think we should look at, you know, the task there, right, would be to do for city staff to provide, you know, comprehensive analytics about viable industrial uses, industrial uses that bring a greater return per unit, right? And then those that are market viable, where there's market demand, and a strategy for, again, kind of the eventual revitalization of the Connor Center industrial, because it's already developed, to your point, it's not, you know...
Not gonna tear it down and start over again.
Office is very speculative right now. Maybe around, you know, a town center, you can get some office, but as we, you know, with COVID, it's just sped up a process that was, that's been going on since really the 90s, where companies are slowly downsizing their actual office footprints and moving people to more virtual work environments as well. So that, I'm not sure that's a market, it doesn't mean we wouldn't look at that as a market, you know, question for the industrial center, but we have, you know, valuable, there's not a lot of I-1 zone areas in Northern Virginia, so it would be, it's a valuable piece of property, but a lot of aging infrastructure, a lot of aging development there, so kind of developing a strategy should be the action strategy, right? I know, that's, you know, kind of a, that's not giving you the answer, but I just don't like putting up answers that aren't real.
Correct. And then the strategies can be brought forward, and we can discuss those once they're developed, just enough to talk about.
Absolutely.
That's, yeah.
So the strategies, we want, you know, the strategy is we want to see the best...
Most productive.
Best productive development in, in our Connor Center industrial, and here's kind of the steps for doing it.
Too good there.
Absolutely. So it's important to kind of lay out those steps as well, so we don't repeat mistakes of the past where we just say, here's our vision.
And that's it.
Even if it doesn't make any market sense, we want to make sure that it's backed by reality as well.
Commissioner Colling?
What is the zoning identification on Digital now? Because I know way back when, it was light industrial?
Yeah.
And then they swooped in and did the townhouses, and that all changed. So it has to be some, was it mixed use now, or?
I think it's putt, right? The Palisades is putt.
No, the other side of the street.
Yeah, the other side is still I-1.
What do you mean by that?
The vacant lots, that's right next to that industrial warehouse.
The warehouses, the empty lot, the warehouses, and then the townhouses.
Yeah, the empty lot off of Digital, and at the corner of Digital and Manassas, and so on.
Yeah, so that's still owned I-1. So the townhomes, of course, were rezoned for residential.
So that had to be redone when that was developed, and then the warehouses are still whatever they were, so.
Yeah, those are still under I-1, and then the undeveloped parcels still I-1 as well.
So the whole street couldn't be mixed use? Because that's what it is now.
It is, but it's the not, it's not the right kind of mixed use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't really want to mix industrial with residential uses. From my understanding of the history there, was that, that it kind of aligned more, what was happening aligned with that first action strategy?
Yes.
Where they actually started getting industrial development there, just like, on this side, like, wait, stop, like, do we really want this?
Yeah, and it will, and yeah, it's, it has a history, that's for sure. Ask the people in Belmont Station, they'll tell you real quick.
So again, I think we need to relook at that, you know, and potentially modify, modify that one as well.
Okay.
But yeah, so that's the remaining parcel that is zoned still I-1.
Thank you.
On the other side of the street, you have the daycare, I'm sorry, what is it?
Cross, the...
Yes.
The Merritt and the...
And then you have the veterinary.
The veterinary.
And then you have two parcels adjacent to that coming back towards Railroad Drive before you get to Railroad Drive. One of those, I think, so they're owned by different owners. One of the parcels that's on the intersection with Railroad Drive and Manassas Drive, I don't think it's called Railroad, on the other side of the street, county side, I forget what the name is on the county side, but that's part of the Palisades development.
Okay.
It's part of the proper, it's a commercial proper, it's part of that. The other piece is owned by the Phase 2 developer, who developed the seven-story apartment building here.
Okay.
And that's slated for a restaurant. So that's ongoing, kind of, I believe, it's under site, site manner review at this point.
And where, and exactly is that?
So right next to the veterinary clinic, which is kind of undeveloped land. There's supposed to, right now, the plan is a restaurant at that location.
But that's in the county?
No, no, it's in the city.
That's us?
Yeah, it's still, that's still us.
See, I always thought the right side of Manassas Drive was county and the left was...
It's weird, because parts of it are, so like, when you, so if you take a right, instead of taking left on Railroad from Manassas Drive, you take a right into that Elm Station, Elm and the Elm, that development is in the county.
Wow.
But the parcels that are on Manassas Drive are the city.
The frontage.
But then when you, when you drive further up Manassas Drive, and you get across the street from Belmont Station, that is the county you get.
Oh my gosh.
So if the, if we wanted to put up a tollgate for those folks to go home, that would be...
Get a little dollar, come in there.
Get through our town to get to your county.
Do you pay us or something there, isn't it?
I can't blame them a lot, they believe they're part of our city, is where they live. I believe they're building a connection.
In the back.
To have access, yeah, through the back to Liberia Avenue, so, because right now, the county fire would, and ambulances would drive through our city to get there, even though we can...
And people don't know that, that's interesting. That's interesting.
Um, let's see. Okay, so the city should actively promote the development of the remaining parcels by marketing the property, be it whether, whatever channels are available to... Okay, so the city should actively promote the development of the remaining parcels by marketing the properties via whether, whatever channels are available to try and commercial or office uses. I think that, that's, I think that's fine. I think that's a good follow-up step after you've done the analytics, right? And you've done kind of the concept planning for what, what can work there, then yeah, that is the next step is to start marketing that like we did for, for this side of the downtown. We developed our vision. That was backed by the numbers. And then we started marketing that out to developers and businesses and then that's kind of how we have the construction going on here. So it was kind of step by step. So I, I still think, think that that action strategy is a good one, but it's missing the first few steps in that process.
To get there, yeah.
Two of the parcels on Digital Drive, Lot 4 to 7 should be allowed to develop. Okay, so I'd have to see what those two parcels are in Lot 4 and Lot 7.
Those are those parcels in there. I think Lot 4, maybe the existing industrial, then 7, it's the 4 or 5, but those are the lots.
Got it. So probably we'd have to delete 7, which is already.
Completely done. Check it off. Accomplished.
And the interesting part is that action strategy contradicts the first.
Yeah, but that's true.
Which, where are you now?
Yeah, so on Action Strategy 4, yeah, it contradicts the first.
That's great. Should not be allowed to rezote for residential development and then down below.
So that could be like a modification they made later on.
True.
Because they didn't want any industrial, but then they.
But they didn't cancel out the. That's right.
But again, it's, it's, you know, you should add your, your goals, but again, the, the analysis needs to be done.
Correct. Yeah, good.
Let's see, five, the city should remain an active partner in the Park Center project to ensure that its development is first class and it becomes a true downtown. So I believe they're from Park Center to.
Across the street.
Right?
Yep.
Well, and I think this may actually have been probably, I think it was supposed to be a larger development, I'm assuming.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I mean, we, we are still doing that, right? So we're, we're kind of in the driver's seat. We're not just a partner. And we have partners now, but we're, we've taken over kind of the driver's seat of defining what our goals are with the downtown and then finding partners who are able to implement that and make that happen, right? We set our included goals of, of having an anchor come in, having a new city hall and library as part of this. Having a VR garage that's supportive of commercial, having adjacent parking built for the original Phase 1, what's now called Park 17, used to be called City Center. We laid out our goals and then we, we developed out our concept plans, we did the market analytics and then we went out and found good partners who are now in the process of, I mean, that's why I still think that's a, a valid strategy there.
Do we have a definition for first class?
Yeah, that's.
And a true downtown, not just a downtown, but a true downtown. I'd like to know, are we, are we meeting that here or what? That's it.
Yeah.
Lovely qualifiers here.
I mean, that sounds kind of like, almost like a vision statement.
Yes.
Where you want to be the best, right, of something. And it's good, you're absolutely right. It's good to kind of have metrics for what, what that means. I think the goal, like we laid out, and I think it may actually be delineated in other sections here is, is to have a downtown that brings the community together, that provides space that, that allows for events and community gatherings, that provides dining opportunities, entertainment opportunities, shopping opportunities, civic uses, right? So we, I think it's, it may be outlined somewhere, yeah, later here.
Land use chapter, we'll update it that.
So I think that, that's, that, that could kind of be the definition.
Sure, yes.
And then I guess we're really not supposed to be talking about revenue when we're talking about. That's probably the best metric.
Yes, true.
For a successful downtown.
Yeah, look at the end, right.
So I think those previous things that I mentioned, the civic use and everything else.
Should lead to, yes.
In a different area, yeah.
So the financials, I think, is what, what I discussed.
The end results would come from.
For the taxpayers as well. What are we doing also to help them? But I think here just more what's, what's the land use purpose for what?
Well, you drop down to goal two, you talk about revenue, so. So we, we're ahead of ourselves.
And it shouldn't be there anyway.
And at goal three, same thing.
Well.
Yeah, so anywhere where we're talks about revenue, we really shouldn't be doing that.
That would simplify this section here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it shouldn't be part of the comprehensive.
At all.
Certainly be part of the governing body, kind of strategic plan, right, for what, what, what they want to do for, for the city, but for an actual comprehensive plan. It's really supposed to be more aligned towards winning these decisions and not fiscal decisions. Even though, of course, they, you know, they marry quite well.
Hopefully they do.
I guess the city should prepare an economic development plan, right? That will examine the current economic situation and define a strategy. I think we've done that. I think that's, that's still a good goal to have. Because it's, we did that specifically with the downtown. I think there's more work to be done in the future with Route 28 for the analytics. The same thing for the Connor Center Industrial, we talked about that. And then the other side of the tracks, right, depending on how successful we are here. And as developers look for additional opportunities in Northern Community Market, this will be one of them as the VR takes off with Amazon H2.
Would you want to have like a periodic check-in with that, like with certain of these to have it done every period of time, to have it relooked at or updated?
Yeah, because there's a couple, there's a couple of goals, right? So it's almost like a loop, like performance metric loop where.
Sometime down the road then, after a certain period, right?
Yeah, so we came up, we, you run the original numbers here for what the current demand is right now, right? So it's based off primary market information and a little bit of secondary, right? Once you have a successful downtown though now, that changes your anyways.
Right.
So it's good to then reevaluate after a few years. If you're successful and you're starting to recruit from tertiary markets.
Sure.
Then you rerun the numbers and see what your viability is. And then that tells you what additional opportunities you have.
Can have, good.
Yeah, so you, you can't, it's, it's a constant loop.
Don't want to close it off after the initial.
Evaluation, reevaluation.
Good, yep.
State and regional economic forums are to become better informed of regional business. I think we do that already. I'm not sure which regional economic forum is specifically addressed here. There is, there is a newer, I guess, committee that brings all the economic development directors of the region together. I don't intend it, but one of my assistants does intend it just to kind of stay on top of what's happening as a region. So I think that goal is being met by staff.
2.2, is that where you are right now?
Yes. Three, examine the ways for making Manassas Park more competitive in the regional market for attracting new businesses.
We're, we're in the middle of doing that.
I'm not sure how you, you make yourself more competitive beyond doing realistic, good developments that then breed additional success.
And then you can look at it to see how it's.
Never see how things have changed and then keep building on that. So it's without being speculative, but it's, it's hard to make yourself more competitive, say than like a Falls Church or Fairback City. You just, your, your goal is to, to develop and attract those businesses and capture your markets, right? So, you know, it can make sense if you, if you have a strong kind of tourism industry. So if you're in a winery region, you're competing for another winery region.
Yes.
That, that language there makes a little bit more sense for how you want to distinguish yourself from the others and win over the business of the target market. Of who's going out to the winery.
Right.
So we, we have that a little bit here. So let's say we get the theater place here.
Right.
We want them to be the most successful theater in this immediate kind of market area. We want our town center to be the, the more successful one. So I, I guess if it can make sense, right, you do that through successful events, you do that through the right business.
But it could be built into something else or added to it or just, you know, this can actually go with possibly one of the strategies you were talking about or.
I think the strategies that you're talking about previously will result in that.
In that, yes.
You need that.
Correct, yeah.
But again, these are just my initial thoughts. I think next time we'll bring some, bring it as a Word document, we can start just changing language a little bit, seeing what you all agree with or would like to change.
Good.
I guess my question is.
Some of these.
Go ahead. I'm just, I'm trying to understand like what we're trying to accomplish right now because I feel like we're just walking through and just sort of.
This is the initial going through.
It's. We can, yeah, it's, it's your all's discretion kind of how you want to.
We're just going through it tonight just once over and then the next meeting, the Word document will be here and we'll be able to hear from the city.
So you've had initial background, I guess, tonight, so you can think about it a little bit more. And next time we'll bring a, you know, bring a Word document and even start recommending some edits yourselves. We can start working on it right now.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, but I think just maybe it's just the way that I think what would be helpful for me most would be to get those recommendations and get some updates as part of that sort of discussion. And with, with the city sort of saying, these are the things that we don't think need to be there, as opposed to giving me like a sort of, what was sort of a blank slate to really redevelop the entire document. It'd be really helpful to know what are, what are the things here that are no longer relevant based on.
Yeah, I can go through here and mark things off.
Right, and so those, so we're not actually, so spending considerable time, sort of going over and through things, talking about why they're not relevant and sort of what the redundancies are as a first wash sort of by staff and then sort of bringing it back to us to say, what else do you want to add to this?
We can do that. The only caution is, so we don't technically have a full-time city planner, right? We have a, Nikki's called zoning administrator.
Collateral duty, collateral duty, yes, so many.
And others on duty.
Yes, exactly.
That's her first response, is development services management, which is managing your code enforcement division, your building division, your permitting division. And by the way, the city tax on also be our zoning administrator and also be our city planner. You just can't do those things. It's not possible. Again, in 2000, you know, with the Great Recession, the city made a conscious decision to reduce significantly the community development department, which is public works and, and community development, by 40% staffing. And just, just decimated them to be able to, be able to function as, as a robust department. They did that with finance as well. So when I started here, I had to rebuild finance to, so it could actually be audit worthy, right? And so finance now is a, a more effective structured organization to accomplish that. So that's, I think, been the biggest challenge. So again, we don't have a, a full-time city planner to do this and Nikki's doing kind of the day-to-day stuff every day with permitting, with, with everything that goes on in that division. She's a manager, but unfortunately as a city, we have to be doers as well. I'm also the economic development director while I'm the city manager. In reality, I should be managing economic development director, reviewing what they're doing, right? Kind of strategically placing myself in, in areas to oversee versus being the doer. But because we're very thin as an organization, we're all doers and social managers at the same time. And that just makes us less effective in being able to, because you're absolutely right, that's the way to do it is to bring, there's really, there's a couple of ways really to do kind of comprehensive planning. And one is, let's hear from the community first, right? So you can have citizen committees that look at these things and then come back and say, hey, here's what we want, you know, to see in there. And then staff can come in and provide their inputs or staff could be the first one to provide inputs. So there's different ways to, to do it. I think what, what the, the goal of the chair here was, was to start making at least some minor modifications via work sessions here. Since again, we don't, we don't have that capacity to do a deep dive. I don't want to speak for Nikki here, but I know I've shown a lot of things at her and Calvin that I don't think permits them to do a deep dive in our current comprehensive plan and start making modifications to and recommendations back to you. We can certainly look at it, evaluate contracting that service out and having contractors bring back to us, but that's still a lot of us kind of babysitting as well.
And that would, that would, I would say, think that that would be after we get the goals to a certain point where we know we need, need to do with the rest of the chapter in that.
It could be, or again, it, it just depends how you want to do it. Like you could have a full review and complete edits and saying, yeah, we're deleting everything that doesn't make any sense anymore. We're coming back with these recommendations, not just on the language change of the bodies, but also the goals, the action strategy. Here's our recommended changes and you can kind of deep dive in there.
If you're, if you're willing and interested in walking through the goals in a work session type of, of an approach, I mean, that's.
But you all need to reach consensus on what you all want to do with that.
Well, I've been, I've been listening to everything we're talking about and you touched on it at the very beginning, Lester. I guess I need clarification on, you said we were going to start with a few chapters. I need a, I need a timetable, I guess. We're going to look at this, this and this by this date. And then we're going to hope to, to complete that and then move on to chapter 10, 12 and 13.
So we'll, we'll start with this one and, and at our next meeting, we'll have another, another discussion.
So we're only going to look at chapter five to start with.
That's it, that's it.
Then I have another question.
Sure.
Do we meet every month through the summer? Because I know the city council, doesn't city council take a month off or two months or something?
What they do is instead of having two meetings per month, in reality during a bunch of seasons, they have four or five meetings per month.
Yeah.
But they go down to one meeting in July and then one meeting in August.
So we would continue to have a monthly meeting?
Monthly meeting.
Okay, so we need, in my opinion, we need to set a schedule of what we want to look at in May, which we're doing right now. What do we want to look at in June and what do we want to look at in July so that we have a plan for the comprehensive plan?
So is it reasonable then to go chapter after chapter? So we could do chap, the chapter five goals, not the whole chapter, but the goals at our next meeting. So for, for June, we would look at the, we would walk through with you the goals that are in chapter five. And then for July, we would then look at the chapter, whatever the next chapter would be here for.
Well, I went to the index to see what the chapters were.
Page 48 looks like it's the next goals and objectives and action strategies for park and, park and rec. So then that would be for July, the goals.
Yeah, it, it depends how, how long you want to take for each, like, do you think you can knock out each review in one meeting or do you want to spend two meetings?
So do we want to see how the first one goes and then we can see if we want to be more, because we have time for this. This is no rush on, on this effort. We want to make sure we're doing it thoroughly.
I think we need to identify of chapter five through chapter 13, what are the most relevant sections? We don't have to go through the whole thing as, you know, five, six, seven, eight.
I think we're just reviewing the goals, right?
Yes, just the goals.
Somebody needs to tell us, or somebody needs to tell me, public works, transportation, land use, public safety. We're starting with economic development. What is the next most important of the chapters? And not just go straight through them. Somebody, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
We're not under.
Looking at the table of contents and at what, how the chapters are.
We're not under a time constraint for this. This is actually something we have plenty of time for, so.
Well, we keep saying that, but what is our timeframe?
There is no timeframe, that's the thing. Like, so the planning commission is required to review every five years, review. But that's not specifically defined what we're, like what we're, we're doing right now, we're reviewing, right? So you're, you're fulfilling that legal requirement. I'm not sure if any chains even have to be made when you review. So the state law doesn't force us to, so it's, it's really driven by you all, what you all want to accomplish, right? So you can set your own timetable. I'm not sure there is, like, we, we, there were sections here. I think we had to go back and update to enable the downtown development. So we, I think we've already kind of identified our priorities over the last few years and we updated those. So I think at this point, and Nikki, go free chime in, I'm not sure there is kind of a prioritized effort. Really, it's really your prerogative and what, because there is no set timeline, we can take as long as we want with this. And, and go just in numerical order, or if you all are interested in certain topics that you want to visit first, we can do that as well.
Commissioner Mensing, I know we're not giving you a chance to say your, your piece there, did you want to offer anything?
Okay, I have a question. So when we finish each chapter, are we going to like finalize that? Like, get that approved like each chapter at a time or are we going to wait until we finish the whole entire thing?
We're all discretion as well. We can keep the, the log of changes going and submit to the governing body as one comprehensive change. Or we can, you know, maybe make it easier for them to say, okay, we keep one chapter, let's bring it back to the governing body for approval for that chapter. And so they just, it's a, it's a lesser of review. Or we can update all the goals and bring that to a meeting. But I think that'd probably be a big review to edit all the goals in the comprehensive plan and bring that back to the governing body. But I think you're probably the best person to provide us what, what you think makes more sense for, for governing body review.
I guess my recommendation would be to go through chapters numerically and then finish each one and send it off each one separately.
Oh, separately or the whole thing?
Separately.
Each one as we complete it, send it on, yeah.
Yeah, because then that's less of a review burden.
Burden on the governing body. Burden on the governing body, yes.
Okay, now you all said that you had looked at the land use chapter. I don't see any update date on chapter eleven as to when it was looked at. So that doesn't give me any, anything to say. Well, they just looked at, oh, here, one place I find it on one of the maps, December twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say that anywhere within the chapter at the footnote on the bottom of the page or anything.
And especially the goals.
We can add that, but I do remember that now. I did a pretty big presentation at the planning commission and governing body. It was a joint meeting in October of twenty nineteen where we went over big concepts like the sixty forty split and why that didn't work. We actually did a pretty deep dive on that issue.
Well, actually, this page says twenty twenty, this page says twenty nineteen amended. So there's different times that things were looked at, so.
Yeah, we did some twenty twenty analysis as well.
Chapter twelve adopted June sixteen twenty twenty, okay.
Yeah, we did transitation to modify that to match.
Okay, that gives me a little bit more, okay.
Yeah, so from a prioritization standpoint, we, we did take, we looked at pieces of this to make sure that it was conforming. The critical pieces were conforming with the immediate actions.
With the town center that you, yeah, you had to look at that at that point, yes, I understand that.
I don't think, you know, economic development's a bad chapter to start with because it's still, you know, front and center. And it may be a good thing to talk about, what are the next steps?
Give us a chance to go through it and see how it goes, and we can then see where we go with it.
It's kind of still kind of the priority effort right now of the governing body. So it makes sense, I think, to look at those goals and make sure they're, they're in alignment with the community goals, governing body, planning commission, and city staff.
Good.
And beyond that, again, it's, it's subjective at that point for what, what you all would like to look at. I will say from a CIP standpoint, there's going to be a lot coming up with environment, if that's represented somewhere. Transportation's always a big one, but all these are important. So it's hard to say, we're going to be dealing a lot with parks, we're going to be dealing a lot with everything here. So it's hard to say which one is really, really a priority. I don't see, okay, there's public safety. Definitely as we look at these, we need to remember to add some language to, be kind of the CIP process as well for.
The next.
Yeah, and I don't know if, I don't like general governmental services don't really fall in here. But it's always part of our CIP, but also I'm not even sure where we put that. That might have to be a future chapter that's added to these documents.
We can start with thinking we'll go chapter by chapter, and then if something comes up and we feel we want to go to a different chapter, we can have that flexibility. But at least we'll start with the goals for each chapter then.
But again, it's going to be your discretion. If you, if there's something that the planning commission is more interested in looking at, we can do it that way. Or we can, you know, so that's probably the more important discussion point tonight is how we want, you all want to manage this process. And if you want to kind of pilot, do a pilot run with the chapters, see how that works, and see how we want to maybe improve the process. And then maybe what order we'd like to do, what the timeline is, and all that can be modified, right? So we say, oh, we'll spend one meeting for each chapter, and we realize we need more time.
We can add that.
Then modify and say, hey, you know, we want to, we want to take, take the time to do it. So how many chapters total would we be looking at to update?
So the goals, so there were goals on thirty-six, and then.
The goals start in chapter.
Five through eleven.
Well, I think actually there is housing.
Did I?
Yeah, thirteen, actually, thirteen, eight chapters. Five through thirteen.
So chapter four then. Yeah, I would probably recommend holding off on housing until, it's something that with the federal relief money, housing is a big part of that. And we may be doing some deeper housing strategy for the city.
So chapter four you're talking about?
Well, because I don't see any goals in that chapter. I was looking for the goals.
I think it's on.
I'm just not seeing goals there, that's a.
There are no goals for the chapter.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't see any goals in that chapter, that's why I moved past it. It, it looked like the goals started with chapter five is what I found.
I guess it's the draft that I was thinking of, we did add some goals.
In a previous draft?
Yeah.
Was it something you had in your turn?
Yep.
So then whichever chapters have goals, those would be the chapters, yep.
Okay, so by five through eleven, is that correct? Or is it five through thirteen?
It's five through thirteen.
Thirteen is public works, so.
Okay, so each chapter, so again, the timeline's yours. Reference in my previous jurisdiction when we did a comprehensive review of the comprehensive plan, it was a two-year process. It didn't happen overnight. They took a long time with each chapter of reviewing it back and forth. And unfortunately, they sent the whole thing to the government.
Oh, geez, that must have made them, made the.
Yeah, that's like bringing them out.
That's a real way to make an impression.
So in addition to looking at the goals, we need to look back through the chapter to see how they arrived at the goals, no?
That's what we've been on the work is.
Well, yeah, but you can't, you got to know why the goal was set the way it was. And in order to do that, you need to look through the chapter.
If the city's going to walk with us through to let us know where they see the goals already. Because they, they'll let us know which ones that they feel we've already addressed, those that we are addressing, those we haven't addressed or can't. And then we have the opportunity to weigh in then.
Absolutely, you want to set the.
Yeah, well, this is a good, it was a good goal at the time, but how did they even come to that decision?
And we're fifteen years past, so it's, it's like.
Lena, refresh my memory, this all started with the charrette? Because I remember we had a two-day, three-day, two-weekend thing over at the high school, and the citizens came. So I'm wondering, is there a need to have citizen input on this?
There, so it's, again, that's your discretion. It's, what I will say, it's very hard for us to recruit residents to participate in our standing committees. So I think it's always, you know, it's preferable usually. I mean, to have community input, you certainly represent the community as well. So you are providing that input. A proactive, you know, engagement is a strategy. But we, we just found it very hard the last few years to recruit people to, to be part of citizen committees. It's, it's just not an easy process, so we can try it.
I understand that too, but could we not put out an invitation and have it on a Saturday at the police department community room? Or over at the high school in the lobby? Or, and whoever shows up, we have a discussion and we talk about things, just to get citizen input. Because just human nature, as soon as changes are made and decisions are made and it's in print, people go, well, why'd they do that? Well, you have the opportunity to come and have input if you didn't take advantage of it.
So then we have to do a whole period of hearing once a week. Yeah, so once, once you all make modifications that you feel comfortable with, we do have to advertise that in a local public hearing.
Sure.
So the public will have input at that time. But I think what you're referencing is before we make the changes.
Be a part of the decisions, be a part of.
And that's, that's certainly a way, way to do it.
Because that's, that's why I was clarifying that, that's how this came to be to start with. I mean, they had a comprehensive plan, but this was greater detail.
If we were tackling each chapter as a whole, then that would be a way for us to go. If we're starting with the goals to start with, to just update the goals to make sure that they're relevant for today.
Okay.
But yeah, if we're getting to where we're going to be taking each chapter by chapter and just redoing it, then there would need to be something more intensive. But for, for now, my thought was just let's get the goals relevant to today and then see where that takes us.
But I think Commissioner Kaya has a point. I'm not sure how you get to the end without really understanding where you are right now.
The beginning.
And being able to give context and be clear that the context that you are in right now are relevant to the goals that you're developing. Without really taking and reviewing sort of like the context and updating the context. I'm not really sure if your foundation in the, in the development of goals is going to be solid. Especially if then you go backward to then establish and redevelop the text that precedes the goals. Then you're writing the context to the goals that you already developed. As opposed to using the, using sort of the information from the environment to then develop the goals.
So if we're, but we're looking at updating the goals that we have. We're not, we're not starting from scratch, so we're just taking it from where it is. If we did, so the city can let us know where we are with it. I mean, that, that's one big part with it, because we're fifteen years past the plan.
And I think that's my point. Do you really want to take a fifteen-year-old document, go to the end of a chapter and update those for the context of today? Without updating the, updating sort of the contextual information that describes where you want to go.
Text current.
If we had dedicated, if we had resources that we could rely, you know, we could use to really do that deep dive, like the city manager was saying, that's, that's, that's one thing.
We as a city know why we're taking the actions that we're taking.
Right.
To put that in a, in a comprehensive plan, that, that's a big kind of time and effort to amend the whole, the whole thing. Again, I just provide the example in previous jurisdiction, it took two years to do that, to that, that entire process.
If you indulge me, so if you go to page twenty-eight under like labor force, there's data that goes back to two thousand, right? That data is no longer relevant in a twenty twenty-one.
You just had the twenty twenty census.
And so my, I think the point is, I don't know if I could develop a goal on economic development, employment. Sort of with the foundation of two thousand data when two decades have passed since.
The goal would be to use the two twenty twenty data to.
But I don't, but I don't even know what the goal say yet, right? I haven't developed my goal. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how.
The goals are here, so we're just looking at the relevance.
Right, imagine that the goals aren't there and we're starting from scratch. I still got to, I'm developing my context, right? And at a minimum, a markup of the data to update the data to give some current relevancy to the goals that we develop.
Can we try, can we try this chapter for our next meeting and see how it works? And then if we don't like it, we can talk about what we'd like to do instead or how we'd like to do it. Because I would like to see how the discussion goes with just this chapter and with the goals. And then we can see if it, if it looks like it's going to work moving forward for the other chapters. Is that fair? We can try it or no?
When this meeting is advertised, can we emphasize to the public that this will be discussed at the next planning commission meeting? And the public is welcome to attend? I mean, it's an open meeting to start with.
Sure.
And make it more, put more emphasis that they are welcome to attend and have input? Can we do that?
Social distancing starts in July, so right now, the social distancing guidelines of government executive board are still in effect. Those may go away June fifteenth. That's what, where it looks like we're headed. The mask mandate may still be here beyond that time. But it's, it's, it's looking very likely that the social distancing guidelines will be going away on June fifteenth.
I see what you're saying, so to limit the number of people here.
Like if we invite people and then we're just not socially distanced, and we're, you know.
We did an injustice to that, yes. I totally under, I wasn't even thinking that way.
Yeah, so that's why it's been, it's been a good and bad. Like before, we never had the YouTube videos. So we've been a little bit more transparent now with the YouTube video because people can now go online, watch it live or watch videos for, you know, in the future. You know, budget presentations of downtown development, we recorded all that stuff on YouTube, so it didn't require people to have to come here. And sometimes, you know, they're very busy in life and work, and they can't make it here, and they miss a presentation, and they. So it's had some good elements in terms of technology. But certainly, we, you know, it's good if we're going to invite people to come here, which is always a good thing. We should probably do it once we would kind of move past the, the social distancing.
Once we're back to a more normal existence.
Yeah, which again, it's looking like it's.
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming.
It is, yeah, I think things are looking better, let's, let's cross our fingers and hope the trajectory remains that way. But our goal is again, community center, going back to full membership starting July first. And so everything's looking very good for, for July.
So if we were to do our sort of a work group thing on next meeting and then do that for the July meeting to let the public know that these are, we have goals for it or whatever, and they're more than welcome to.
Yeah, so I think you'll maybe still come up with an agreement on process and what needs to be done. We're here to support that again. I think the updating the whole thing is just going to take a very long time. I'm not sure when we'll, we'll be able, I completely see your point in terms of the, doing the analysis. We, from a city management governing body standpoint, we've done the analysis for why we're taking the course of action we are. I think what Chairman Finkels is trying to do is making sure that what's in the current comprehensive plan is aligning with at least where we're headed.
Yes, you are, you're moving already, you're on your way, exactly.
This document is not going to stop us.
So we're, at this point, then we're looking at goals to agree with what already in progress.
Where we're headed already, so it just doesn't, because right now, it just, it's not aligned.
No, no.
It's just not aligned with what we're doing. And it's, it's always a, it's always a complex stance, right? Because your comprehensive plan is really supposed to be a very long-term view of things, right? But again, we, you have mandates, right? Twenty seventeen, our, our city's collapsing, you have a wave election, you have a new mayor, and we need to move things forward, right? And I'm brought on, and we, we do the, the analysis, we see, kind of identify what our issues are, and we should start moving forward to fix the city. But we don't go back and.
The plan is looking.
I can tell you, we're not going to stop our.
No, turn it back, turn the clock back, we got to fit into the plan.
I think that's what Chairman Finkels' goal was, is to at least see, is this aligning with what's happening now? Doesn't mean that that's, you know, the last step of the process. Because then in the future, we can now do a holistic view of, of everything as well. And then maybe when, I, I think we're going to have a little bit more time. I think in twenty seventeen, we were in crisis mode, right? We were financially distressed, we were going to be labeled by the state. We were overwhelmed by debt, we were just facing a crisis across the street, it's still a failure, right? We had no downtown, everything was going the wrong way. So we, we, we had to take some dramatic actions to start turning that around. You're seeing that very through right now across the street when you walk out here. But there was a lot of analysis done, that market analysis, right? That's actually fixing the problems. You know, we, we have interested businesses now, right? We had the theater who came out to the, to the theater owner who came out to the, you know, groundbreaking ceremony. There's a lot of positive momentum right now. And so again, we, we had a mandate to fix things for our residents as quickly as possible. And so I think it, it, it's not a bad idea to at least make sure that your comprehensive plan is aligned with kind of the, the direction you're taking. Because I think what may have been envisioned before, and we, we know it wasn't working, right? Because like the previous comprehensive plan language on land use and the requirements, the sixty forties, whatnot, it just wasn't based on, on reality. Like there was incentives put in place where instead, the developers essentially were willing, they didn't, weren't interested in the tax breaks that the previous incentive structure had in place for rezoning, right? No one bid on that, right? It's just because it wasn't market reality. What they were more interested in was an actual market real, realistic development proposal, right? And so the comprehensive plan just wasn't aligned with reality then. And that's why we had to take that action in twenty nineteen. We, we had done the, two different firms who did the analytics first to tell us kind of what our, our retail square footage capacity was from a very conservative standpoint. So we had to, we had to rethink things, and we had to look at that land use section and modify, same thing with transportation, to kind of fit where we were headed. And so, but that was kind of working backwards. I think we know where we're headed now, so I think the goals, Chairman is at least aligning that so we don't have to do what we did in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty where the comprehensive plan was being retro, you know, amended to, to align with kind of what things were already happening. I think we know where we're headed now, so we can actually jump ahead of it at this point, maybe just fix the goals here. But if we, you know, certainly if we want to look at the entire document, that's a very complex process to do. And again, the priority for, for making Calvin is that is managing what's happening across the street. All the side plan reviews, the inspections, everything, that is their priority right now. That has to be successful, or else we can have the best comprehensive plan in the world, and it doesn't matter. If your downtown is going to fail, it just doesn't matter at that point. So that, that is the priority right now for staff, is get that project done correctly. And so I think this is a way to at least kind of go half, you know, meet, it's not the ideal way to do it. But at least certainly getting a positive step.
So let me understand this. So let me understand this, we will look at the goals, and obviously for next meeting, hopefully Commissioner Evans and Mensing will be at the table, we'll have five people here having input, and we can see, like you just said too, let's see how, how this chapter works, let's see how it all flows once we are all here to talk about it, but are we going to be able, once we adjust the goal, I don't want to say change, as we adjust the goals, can we then ask staff to go back and update the text? Is that how it works? We don't update the text, we don't have that information.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, like you say, we have time, so, but we need to have this thing somewhat cohesive.
It just depends, like, so if you need that text to be updated before you move to the next chapter, with the...
No, the text could be, they, once they see the goals that, that the council approves, once we present it, and the goals are approved, then staff can go back and say, okay, now we need to update the text to make it current.
But if we need to do that before we move on to the next chapter?
That's going to take some time.
I don't think it needs to be.
But even those changes, they do have to...
They have to go to the council also.
For review, public hearing for any amendments, then governing body review, public hearing for, for the amendment, so...
So then what you're, what you're saying, text would have to be updated to go along with, we couldn't approve the goals and then go back?
What I recommend is, is we, we update the goals right now, hopefully we, we're able to fund additional staff for maybe a year, including a planner, right? And that's what we would assign the planner to do, is to do...
Did you put that in your presentation, young lady?
There, there could be a way, like, you know, it's something, we're looking at that division, because clearly from residents, it's become a, a bigger and bigger priority, right? The more, like, when you stop doing something, right, because you completely defunded it, guess what, it starts to be...
The people wanted, it's like...
All of a sudden, I need it, need it.
Why aren't you doing it?
I think there's a strong push right now, governing body, that, hey, we do need to get better code enforcement, especially code enforcement, I think that's the, the number one thing, but zoning enforcement is also part of that, that's part of the code enforcement, but that also requires an expertise in zoning, so I think there's, there's things that we, we are going to do to continue to add value and personnel for this division to be able to, to do it the right way, right? And right now, personally, we just can't, because we're, we're hamstrung, we're, we're limited in the number of FTEs we can, we can request each year because of financial constraints, and so we really had to prioritize, and this year, we looked, okay, we're going to have some part-time, at least code enforcement support to help making it her team, that was a big priority, but transportation, we have, that's the biggest part of our CIP, and we don't have anyone assigned to that. So we have our, our development, our community development director, who's supposed to be managing the department, again, being a doer, doing that, along with our engineer who specializes more in, in our waters, who are stormwater enterprise fund, being a good soldier, and, and also helping out transportation, you know, that's not, is, is field, right? So that, that has to be, that had to be a priority, same thing with CSA, it's, it's taking care of our kids with, with challenges, disabilities, others, in our, in, in our school system, we're out of, really, when they, when the school system can no longer serve them, our social services department then takes responsibility for these children, there's about twenty of them, and it's a very expensive program, it's a very complex program, and all we asked for, because financials, we're at least a part-time person, because we had no one administering the program, so it was here, you know, a football that was handed across the entire department to try to figure, figure it out, and it's, it's some, one year, I think it was FY seventeen or eighteen, we spent one point one million dollars on that, it was the largest single program, we had no one actually managing it, from like a single focus, and so those were our priorities this year, there's still a lot of other priorities that we're going to bring back, you know, in the next few years, we've been, we've been talking a lot with governing body about a problem with, with the sexual abuse that exists, and how we need to get ahead of that, both by supporting DSS and, and also our detectives.
And your trafficking, the trafficking problems, the sex trafficking, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot of issues that, that again, we need to address, and so we're bringing, but we're, so right now, in the model, I, I present roughly twenty-seven FTEs over ten years, so you're looking at, that's two point seven per, per year, and so we, we need to, we, each year we have to prioritize where, where those positions are, yeah.
And I, I counsel certainly understands, if we want to stay current with the times, we need staffing to keep up with it, you can't, because in a minute, she's going to leave us because I can't do all this anymore. I mean, that's just the way it works, that's just, that's just, and I don't want to say goodbye to Mickey or Calvin, I mean, they're doing a great job, and, and we need them, so...
We are trying to avoid...
So lighten up, buddy.
Yeah.
Already then.
We're always going to advocate, and certainly, I think it's, it's always a good idea for you all to provide your input in terms of the value of, of this division, of why it's important for the city, it's, it's always good for the governing body to hear different perspectives, because there are a lot of important things that, that need to be done across the city, and I, and I do, from a metric standpoint, again, you look at the FTEs from two thousand nine, great recession, it was public works and community development that took the biggest hit, and second was finance, and I had to prioritize finance, because we were unauditable.
Oh, my God.
We had no credit, we were relabeled viscerally distressed by the state.
It just had gone down the tubes and, yeah.
So we had to prioritize that, and, but, you know, there, there's, there's push for things, you know, like the parking enforcement, we're tackling that now too, as well, there was no parking enforcement division.
And dogs running loose, well, you don't, we don't have an animal control person, it's sorry.
Absolutely, so there's a lot of those things, examples of that.
Yeah.
But again, the, the big discussion that the governing body had, at, at its planning session was kind of the, the concept of the pie, right? We really wanted to try to take care of everyone, including our tax burden, right?
Exactly.
Who are expecting the tax burden to go down.
Certainly.
So we're doing our best to do a balanced approach, to make sure that, that everything is funded to the best of its ability, including the tax reduction. So it's not black, it's hard, and...
I'm sure everybody at this table, I, I had thirty years' service with, with the public service, and, and we're in Fairfax County, and you get tired of wearing more than one hat, and believe me, we've all had to do it, and, and it's, it's not easy, not easy, so I can certainly sympathize. So, moving on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Mensing, any, any final word from you there?
No, I think it's a good idea to kind of start with chapter five next time and just see how it goes, and if we need to edit our strategy, we can just edit our strategy as we go.
Okay, great.
But I do want to, the way you stated it is the right way, but unfortunately, the city doesn't do a lot of things the right way because of constraints, I, I need to admit.
There's still a lot.
We have to prioritize...
We're here, we're still living here, I mean, it's all right.
We have to like prioritize what are those things that we're going to do the right way.
Yes, yes.
Right? To, to move us along to...
To still get us to a point where...
More things the right way.
Yes.
But you know, sometimes we don't know it's not the right way until we fail at it, then we go, whoa, we need to be doing it differently, and that's the way we learn.
That's what we prioritize, we prioritize financial management first, we got that, we weren't doing that the right way.
Get this fixed, and then we go over here.
Then it was economic development, and why those two things, so normally, again, the public sector, you, you don't exist to make profits, you exist to provide public value, right? And for private corporations, they exist to generate profit, they do that through customer satisfaction, you know, value to who they serve. We exist to serve and create public value, but you also need to generate financial...
Well, bottom line, no, bottom line, we are still a business.
Yes, we are.
Correct, absolutely, you have to operate that way.
We are a business.
A public business, that's right.
And that's why we prioritize financial management, economic development, because then that will give us the tools to eventually start doing everything the right way.
Okay.
And start providing greater public value, and unfortunately, again, we have to be, we're way too reactive versus proactive, because we, if, think of, of the medical community when they're overwhelmed, and they have to do the concept of triage, right? You have to, you have to prioritize, you know, stopping, you know, you have to make those tough decisions about what you're going to prioritize and what you have to, have to let go, unfortunately, that's, that's what happens when you're resource constrained, is you, you have to make those kinds of decisions, and so we've been doing that in the city.
Well, to use your analogy, the top priority right there is to stop the bleeding.
Yes.
That's your first thing, and then you go figure out how to, you know, do I stitch it or tape it, or, yeah.
Keep the patient alive to start with, and then move along, yes.
And that was our theme really, in twenty seventeen, was survive, right? Survive the next few years, and then become sustainable, and then become strong, right? Those are kind of the, the steps you need to get to.
And this budget was very impressive to where we're going with itself, well, it's good.
Getting better, that's the thing.
Yes, yeah.
I was probably over, over positive with, just because I had the perspective, so if it was a new city manager coming in now, and you looked at this, you'd be, oh my God, we're facing a mess, but I remember what it was like just a few years ago. So everything is relative to kind of the perspective of where you began, and so I'm excited about where we're headed, simply because I've seen where we, where we've been.
Where you've been, yeah, that's good. Well, thank you very much, we're, we'll look forward to the, the conversation, the next meeting, thank you, we appreciate it. Great, so we'll...
And I promise I didn't write in the, I didn't write in...
There's no unfinished business, there's no report of special committees, informational update from community development staff, and if there's none, that's fine, but...